...the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, united in the resolve of liberty and justice for all.
Public comments or questions on any non-agenda item?
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Hand.
Here.
Mr. Bowden.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Here.
Approval or corrections to the minutes of the June 12, 2017 Regular Village Board Meeting? Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, a motion to accept as presented.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee March, second by trustee Jones.
Mr. March?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Mr. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
And Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
And Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Public comments and/or questions on any non-agenda item?
I do, I just wanted to take a minute today, I'm Vicki Moore from Gaiman Marrell and I'm also a member of the, or onboard for the Chamber of Commerce. And you guys probably know we just took over in December and we've gone through a lot of permitting and licensing and just all the stuff that we're still learning about how to do and we talked to a lot of people and the first thing we hear is, "Oh, Peetown this or Peetown that, they don't want you to do anything." And I just want you to know that everybody that I have worked with, from you guys, Mr. Cross, Mike Jones, the ladies in the office, the chief, everybody that we have worked with has been wonderful. There's a lot of things we just don't know and we're learning as we go along and we've never hit a roadblock that we couldn't work through with someone from the village. So, I just wanted to let you know that there is and there are people out there that when they say, "Oh, I would never open a business in Peetown," that's not the case. And you know, I tell them, "For what it's worth, we, they have, you guys have been nothing but helpful to us and we appreciate that." And Dan or I wouldn't hesitate doing business in Peetown again. And I just felt like that needed to be said because you guys only hear the bad things. So, I just, I've been meaning to get here to say that and I apologize that I'm here for another reason and just found the time to do that. But it has been something that I've been wanting to say for, since December. So, thank you for that and it doesn't go unnoticed.
Thank you very much.
You are.
And thank you for everything you guys are doing for the community too. Thank you. Anything else, any other public comment? Not, we will go on to reports of committees, no police chiefs report tonight, engineers report.
I have an update on the cracked sidewalks that were brought up during the last board meeting for the 2016 sidewalk program. I let Davis Construction know that the village board wishes that they replaced the three affected squares that they passed previously. Davis Concrete didn't believe that they were actually valid cracks, he calls it random cracking. That's his take on it, however, he said is a goodwill gesture to the village and engineer that he is going to replace the three affected squares. I left an email for the board members to read, just kind of a funny idea.
Good. Anything else?
That's all.
So, I guess, Shori, my question, I mean, one's a crack, not a crack, I mean, you know what I'm saying?
I mean, yeah, there's certain cracks that just happen, depending, you know, stress cracks, it's hard to tell a lot of times whose fault it is, so it's never easy.
But I mean, if there's a year warranty, something's cracked, I mean, that's the warranty, right? I mean, how do you?
Yeah. Okay. It's huge trying to say that it wasn't their fault, but that's, you know, his take.
Okay. Do they comp that before they, before they compact the subsurface?
They should be following those procedures if, you know, I know you talked about a construction observation and the last meeting a little bit, you know, that's something we can get involved with if you like during winter morning.
Should we write into the specifications that any sidewalks that crack, for whatever reason, they have to replace when we put these things out for bid, for one full year?
Well, especially not when they crack, but sink below the surrounding wall, anything that would be perceived as a state, something needs to be corrected. So that way they know if any of these things happen, they're on the line for it.
Yeah, we could do something to that.
Do you think our observations were out of line?
No, I mean, I don't know that, it's just, you never know, I mean, you could be watching them, you could even do material testing on one, you know, load of concrete, and the next one, you don't test all of them because it's just not cost effective, so.
And sometimes mistakes happen.
Yeah, exactly.
That's why you have.
So you never really know for sure.
But that's why you have a warranty, so you can identify when there's a problem and fix it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was a little disappointed in his response.
Yeah.
That's not doing us a favor, he's doing what?
Yeah, and he's just living up to the contract and his own sake. I appreciate that. He's living up to the contract and then making himself.
If he did the work. Yep, that's in there, that's in the danger, put that in there.
Building committee report.
Okay, we met on June 22nd and this is a brief summary, we're trying to get our building codes from the year 2000 and we brought them up to the year 2015. We removed, we removed some of the sections regarding trees and we also discussed about old basements on new residential construction. I think what we did is we came up with something like a half a basement at that point in time. We also had talked about making sure that it's a poured basement. Also, the fire code for sprinklers in the homes, we took that to make sure that is out of there, we're not going to require the sprinklers, it is just not cost efficient and I just think, you know, it's like everybody else, they're going to chase people away. We talked about taking the inch, a quarter inch gap between the slats of the fences to remove that. It was a committee's opinion to go ahead and, go ahead and do that. We also talked about grass and weeds, that the, we agreed that the maximum grass height should be six inches. We also talked about shed sizes, that'll be coming up at another point in time, but trustee Hand brought a very good article here from, actually theirs from Mantino, which would have been nice to see back then. We're going to talk more of that with the building committee, there's a lot of good things in there, a lot of good points.
Like making them bigger or smaller?
Would go a little bit bigger depending on the size of your lot.
Proportional to the lot?
Yes, yes. And also making sure that it's poured on concrete, because you see too many of these running sheds that are out there that are put under four by fours and just put down on blocks and just rodents. Also, the building inspector informed the committee that the capital development committee must be notified when the building code changes are made, the state was notified and made, so we're okay on that. And we're going to be suggested that we need to loop the whole board into the fence ordinance changes here.
Good question. When you said you eliminated the tree thing, one of the first things, what was in there and what did you change it to, or suggesting you change it to?
Committee, let me get it for you. I believe it's entering, entering the yards again. This is what we took out, was from section A, notice to the owner of a dead or substantially dead tree to comply with owner failure to comply.
Is that in the tree ordinance?
No, that's actually in the building.
In the building?
Building, yes, that's not in tree ordinance. That's why we took it out of here, because it's not an actual tree ordinance.
So the tree stuff is in the building ordinance and it may or may not have conflicted with the new tree ordinance, so we just deleted all the tree stuff out of the?
Out of the building.
Out of the building, which is now only carried by the tree ordinance.
Right, right. So it doesn't change anything that's in place, that's what I just wanted to make sure that we were clear on, it's just cleaning up.
Cleaning up.
That ordinance.
I have another question on building, don't we have an ordinance that says when you build a new home, you've got to have 360 degree architecture and no side houses with no windows?
That's in newly planted subdivisions. So, like Westgate, you know, it applies there, Meyer Glen was in, I think Meyer Glen was done before, it's just, but it's just in newly planted, it's not anything existing prior to that being adopted.
Okay. But there's a new home going up, almost completed, facing east, and I don't know if that's Westgate or not.
But it's only certain sections of Westgate too. I think, I think phase, we have to go back and look.
Okay. I just drove by the other day and I'm like, there's no windows on two sides of the house, which is?
Because that was all passed right as everything was kind of steady and then it just stopped. So a lot of this, a lot of the stuff, certain sections of Westgate I know fall under, under that, parts of, I think Ashburton fall under it too, but, and then anything that'll be platted from that point forward, you know, would fall under that.
Are we aware of all those things before we approve a home? Of the different sections and what, where the house falls?
I think that's part of.
That's part of the agreement.
Right.
I was just surprised to see new construction without windows on two sides.
Yeah, it depends on where it's at. Anything else? Yeah, that'll come back, we'll bring that back to the board. Really, the big push is to get our building codes up to speed, you know, we're in 2000 and we had talked about going to, I think, 09 or 12 and then it was decided to stop, come all the way up to 15. One of the big things is taking the residential sprinklers out of that and then just cleaning up a couple of the little things in there. Talking with Tom Pankey and the committee, you know, that's the best course of action is to get it up to 15. In your packets, you also have the treasurer's report, are there any questions on that or comments? We'll move on to no old business, so we'll go on to new business. Item A, special event permits, amplifier permits. Grant Love submitted a special event permit application for a block party at 301 North Glenview Lane on July 22nd, 2017, 3:00 PM to midnight. Request includes street closure. Is there anybody here for that request? 301 North Glenview.
It's an elementary school and just north of Davos Stills.
Okay. I wish somebody was here from there, that'd be nice to hear.
Was that Swanson Center?
Right, no, I understand that, I understand that, but I'm just kind of wanted to hear a little bit about what they were proposing.
I mean, usually, isn't midnight a little late?
Well, I was going to say midnight, I would say 11:00 PM at the latest.
I think historically, that's what.
Historically, yeah, 11:00 PM. What's the pleasure of the board?
So, is it for an amplifier permit?
It's a, there's no amplifier permit attached, no.
So it's just requesting to close the street?
Yes.
So is there any required, I mean, so, what's our, you know, can they have like a band then out on the street?
Well, they would need an amplifier permit, yes, yeah, to do that.
Did the chief have an opinion of this?
I have not spoken with the chief about this. I mean, typically we allow, you know, block parties, I mean, it's not normally a big deal if they are going to have music or an amplifier, you know, then they're required, required to get the permit for it.
I guess, you know, I, I'll go on to the motion that we allow it till, you know, amend it to 11:00 PM, but, you know, maybe somebody here, when they say that it's approved, you know, make sure that they know that this isn't allowing a band or, you know, speakers in the streets, okay?
Definitely.
And they have to come back for that if they want.
Second. Motion by trustee March, second by trustee Jones to approve the special event permit application for the block party on North Glenview Lane.
Mr. March?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Mr. Hand?
Yes.
Number two, the Peetown Historical Society has submitted a special event permit application and an amplifier permit application for the Peetown Fall Festival at 427 West Quinney Avenue on September 17th, 2017, 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM. The request also includes street closure. So this is their annual festival at the Windmill, they do every year, they will keep one lane open, but limit access on both east-west, both east-west streets around the mill, which they do again every year. So move. Second. Motion by trustee March, second by trustee Hupkey.
And that approves the amplifier?
I'm sorry, it approves the amplifier permit and the special event permit application.
Mr. March?
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Item B, review bids and award the 2017 street patching project occurring at various locations in the village.
The bids came in for the patching program on June 22nd, three bids were received, the low bidder was Gallagher Asphalt, $111,630.30. It was a good bid, it came at 13% lower than our estimate, so we are recommending awarding to the low bidder, Gallagher Asphalt.
Discussion?
What was the budget for this? I believe it was $125.
Yeah, I believe so.
How long was it?
$125.
$111? $111. Can we do more for them? Can you do more? Spend our budget? Definitely. Bob usually has a few spots.
Well, definitely.
Bob likes working with Gallagher?
Yes, yes. Gallagher's done work. You know, they're actually the ones doing the route 50 right, right now too.
Supposed to be.
Motion? Second. Motion by trustee Hack, second by trustee Hupkey to accept the low bid of $111,630.30 from Gallagher Asphalt for the 2017 street patching program.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Mark?
Yes.
Mr. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
We'll move to item D, Peetown American Legion Special Liquor Use Permit for Outdoor Beer Garden, July 7th through the 9th, 2017, in conjunction with the Chamber Summer Festival.
Well, good evening, everyone. We don't need a mic, I have a big mouth.
Can you give your name for them?
Oh, Sue Ackerman, Peetown American Legion, temporary manager. We do have licenses already paid for and whatnot for the use of our beer garden. I apologize, being just temporary, I was unaware of the Chamber, which I think is a great idea, bringing business to town. Didn't know Norstube was closed, again, our fault. But I'm here because what I'd like to do, our beer garden is somewhat set back. I don't know, I just thought, Matt, that's the first time, I think that looks good, I'm just wanting to make sure that if I could possibly bring out our beer garden as far as our tables and block it off to allow more visual for some of the adults that kids are on the rides, maybe they want to sit in our beer garden, have a beer, have a frozen drink or whatever, they would still have a visual on their children, whereas if you've been to our beer garden, which you should come, it's very nice, it's set back, so that's all I'm looking for.
So you would just extend?
Just kind of extend it out a little bit, put a couple of the tables and chairs at a visual, which I won't know until I see the gate, the ride set up, but I'm assuming being set back in the beer garden, that wouldn't be an option for parents and so I'm kind of...
So how would you, what would you?
Just straight out from the gate.
Okay.
And whatever Chief Moore thinks means, some horses or, not from my farm, but you know, just kind of rope it off and we will serve, which we can, out in the beer garden, so there will be visual, there will be staff there watching, make sure the alcohol does not leave. But I just thought, I could make good on the fact that we have all the kids stepped down by us and none of the adult things, that maybe we can encourage some of the adults to use our beer garden and watch their kids safely and, and make a fun-filled family event, as I think the Chamber's wanting to do.
Absolutely. I mean, I would work with the chief, you know, we could go down there and kind of take a look at the area and get a determination of exactly, you know, where we're going to be.
Right.
So if I could get a motion for the effect of allowing the Peetown American Legion to extend their beer garden with the advice of the police chief and myself and how far we're out, we're going to go and how we're going to fence it off. Motion. Second. Motion by trustee Hupkey, second by trustee Hand.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Mr. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Mr. March?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Item B, review bids and award the 2017 street patching project occurring at various locations in the village.
The bids came in for the patching program on June 22nd, three bids were received, the low bidder was Gallagher Asphalt, $111,630.30. It was a good bid, it came at 13% lower than our estimate, so we are recommending awarding to the low bidder, Gallagher Asphalt.
Discussion?
What was the budget for this? I believe it was $125.
Yeah, I believe so.
How long was it?
$125.
$111? $111. Can we do more for them? Can you do more? Spend our budget? Definitely. Bob usually has a few spots.
Well, definitely.
Bob likes working with Gallagher?
Yes, yes. Gallagher's done work. You know, they're actually the ones doing the route 50 right, right now too.
It's supposed to be.
Motion? Second. Motion by trustee Hack, second by trustee Hupkey to accept the low bid of $111,630.30 from Gallagher Asphalt for the 2017 street patching program.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
Mr. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
We're moving closer. Trustee Jones, second by trustee Bowden.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mr. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
And Mr. Hack?
Yes.
We will go back to item C, resolution, a resolution approving an asset purchase agreement and the sale of surplus real property and personal property in the village of Peetown Will County, Illinois, sale of water, wastewater systems and related real and personal property to Aqua Illinois. Do you want to, any comments from the board or? I have the resolution here, let me read the resolution. Whereas the village of Peetown owns and operates wastewater and wastewater systems, the systems that provide water and wastewater service to residents and systems include certain real property on which are located, a wastewater treatment plant, water towers and wells, and lift stations, as listed in the attached exhibit A, the treatment plant, tower, well and lift station parcels, easement rights and certain personal property, all as more specifically identified in an asset purchase agreement between the village and Aqua Illinois Incorporated, a copy of which is hereto attached and made a part hereof as exhibit B. Whereas Aqua Illinois Incorporated, Aqua is an Illinois corporation of public water and wastewater utility that furnishes retail water and wastewater service to the public in various portions of Illinois and where as pursuant to section 11-76-4.1 of the Illinois Municipal Code, 65ILCS, the corporate authorities may authorize the sale of surplus public real estate, real property and where as pursuant to 65ILCS, the village may authorize the sale of personal property that in the opinion of a majority of the corporate authorities is no longer necessary or useful to or for the best interest of the village. And whereas the corporate authorities of the village have determined that they no longer wish to operate the systems and desire to facilitate the sale of the systems, including the associated treatment plant, towers, wells and lift station parcels and all other easement rights and real property interest and personal property necessary for the operation of the systems to Aqua Illinois Incorporated for the sale price of $12 million, $300,000, as well as further detail in the asset purchase agreement, a copy of which is attached hereto and made part hereof. Whereas the corporate authorities accordingly declare the treatment plant, tower, well and lift station parcels and all other easements and real property interest necessary for the operation of the systems to be surplus property, the corporate authorities further find the personal property is no longer useful or necessary to or for the best interest of the village. Whereas the value of the treatment plant, tower, well and lift station parcels and any other real property being sold to Aqua Illinois Incorporated shall be determined by a state licensed real estate appraiser and the appraisal will be made available for public inspection and whereas the corporate authorities finds the sale of the systems to Aqua Illinois Incorporated for the price of $12 million, $300,000 pursuant to the terms and conditions of the asset purchase agreement to be in the best interest of the village. Now therefore be resolved by the president and board of trustees of the village of Peetown Will County, Illinois as follows. Section 1, the corporate authorities hereby find that the recitals contained in the preamble are true and correct and incorporate the recitals into this resolution by reference. Section 2, the corporate authorities declare the treatment plant, tower, well and lift station parcels and all other easements and real property interest necessary for the operation of the systems to be surplus property, the corporate authorities further find the personal property is no longer useful or necessary to or for the best interest of the village. Section 3, the corporate authorities authorize the sale of the systems, including the treatment plant, tower, well and lift station parcels and personal property to Aqua Illinois Incorporated for the purchase price of $12 million, $300,000 pursuant to the terms and conditions of the asset purchase agreement with Aqua Illinois, attached hereto and made part hereof as exhibit B. The asset purchase agreement is hereby approved substantially on the form attached hereto and the village president and village clerk or their designees are hereby authorized to execute the agreement upon its finalization. Any minor amendments to the asset purchase agreement may be made hereafter, but prior to execution shall be subject to the approval of the village administrator and the village attorney. Certain exhibits to the asset purchase agreement are preliminary, are unavailable at this time, but shall be included and attached upon approval of the village administrator and village attorney. The village president, village clerk, the village administrator and the village attorney are hereby authorized and directed to take all required necessary and appropriate actions to complete the sale of the systems and comply with the requirements of the asset purchase agreement and to execute such other documents as may be necessary or convenient to allow the village to fulfill its obligations under the asset purchase agreement. Section 4, the corporate authorities in authorizing the sale of the treatment plant, tower, well and lift station parcels acknowledge that the list in exhibit A is preliminary and there may be minor additions or deletions to exhibit A as further research regarding property occupied by the systems is conducted. A version of exhibit A marked final shall be amended, appended to this resolution upon its finalization. The corporate authorities further acknowledge that the treatment plant, tower, well and lift station parcels may be conveyed either by deed or by easement as mutually agreed to by the village in Aqua Illinois Incorporated as appropriate upon further research, but in no case shall real property be conveyed by deed unless the portion of the purchase price allocated to the real property at closing exceeds 80% or more of its appraised value. Section 5, this resolution shall take effect from and after its adoption and approval is required by law. Section 6, the village clerk is hereby directed to publish this resolution at the first opportunity following its passage in a newspaper published in the village or if none, then in a newspaper published in the county where the village is located. And we have one addition then?
Right, so what we're looking for is a motion and a second to approve the resolution with one minor. with one minor change to the asset purchase agreements. In section 1.4 of the asset purchase agreement, 1.4A, we are going to add a new sentence at the end of that subsection that says, "In the event the parties aren't able to reach agreement on the terms of the franchise agreement, this asset purchase agreement shall be null and void."
This is resolution number 17R-03. Motion to adopt.
Motion. Second.
Motion by trustee Bowden, seconded by trustee Jones.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. March?
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
Mr. Hamm?
Yes.
Mr. Hamm?
No.
And the president, Cross?
Yes.
Motion carries, six yes, one no. Questions on the press? Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second?
Right.
Motion by trustee Hupkey, seconded by trustee March?
Yes.
Mr. March?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Hamm?
Yes.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mr. Hamm?
Yes.
Do you agree?